In the back.
Okay.
But I don't have a.
Okay, if we could call the October seventeenth regular scheduled town council meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen, Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis. And Councillor Gardner.
Present.
So we have three councillors present, so we still have a quorum, correct? Attorney Westland?
Yes.
We're good to go, conduct business.
Okay, if everybody could rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two general obligation bond, additional appropriation hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf or with regards to two thousand twenty-two general obligation bond additional appropriation? See, no one rising, I will close the public hearings, everybody online, Dustin?
No one has offered to talk about the public hearing.
Very good, and I will close the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-two geo bonds additional appropriation. And we'll move into the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly ask that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes. And we will refer to questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to the Tom Andrew, Dustin Anderson, at D Anderson at Munster dot org. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council under the public comment section of the meeting? If you are here for that, if you could please rise and come to the podium, state your name and your address, and then say what you want to say.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me here. My name is David Stein, my address is eighty-two forty-six Oakwood, I'm a lifelong Munster resident. My wife Kathy and my children are building a house at eighty-two seventeen Castle Drive. And the reason that I'm here today is to talk about the move that we actually have to Castle Drive. One of the homes directly behind our house that we're building right now is eighty-two fourteen Oakwood. And at least from the outside, the house looks like it's in a state of total disrepair. The driveway is asphalt that's beat up, there's a large section of it that has had, that has had crushed stone, but on it after a tree fell down a few years ago. And the whole pathway leading up to the house is crushed down and nothing's been done about it. The backyard, which I knew home was going to have a terrific view of, is even worse. There's a beaten up chain link fence, a secondary chicken wire fence, a screened-in porch where the screen has been replaced by brown and gray tarp that flaps in the wind, and a rusted-out swimming pool that has half of it covered in a torn tarp and the other half is filled with rainwater. I've lived on the street for thirteen years, I've noticed that the house has been that way the exact entire time. This isn't just an eyesore, it's also dangerous. I haven't, I didn't see anything on the website about any clauses about the state that swimming pools are supposed to be maintained. But this can't be something that we let pass. So I'd like us to see if we don't have an ordinance already about the condition of swimming pools that we try to go ahead and fix that, as well as the maintenance of driveways and walkways in the, in the pathway leading up to the house. The second point that I wanted to bring up has to do with the covenants of Castle Drive. It was relayed to me by Katona, who's the developer of there, that all the covenants was, basically were told to him by the town council. Under section eight subsection high, it states that fences can be no greater than four feet in height and make maybe construct around the side and rear of the lot. I have no idea why we're only allowed to have a four-foot fence. The same zone that we're in, which is, hang on, sorry about that, I have this here for a second. The same zone that we're in, it's the same zone that Hill and Vale is in, it's the same zone that Twin Creek is in, Briar Creek, White Oak Estates, and also the north or the southern part of Castle Drive, as well as the street that I live on right now, Oakwood, which all allow six-foot fences. So I'd like to see if we can propose a way to amend the covenants that would allow a six-foot fence. Obviously not a chingling fence, some type of PVC or wood fence that would be allowed on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, is there anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Jerry Piper, I live at two seventeen Carney. And I've got a question about the public access along Forty-Fifth going from Margot all the way over to Calumet. There are no sidewalks there. And one of the things about this downtown change is that for the safety of the people walking there and the kids and whatever, if any of the residents of Wesley decided that they want to walk over to now what's being this new development, the Rosebud and all those other buildings in that section over there, they have to literally walk on the street or walk on the grass in some areas, not very well mowed sometimes. And those businesses over there, Gerber has sidewalks and it stops right there. The hospital does not, either does Speedway, either does that orthopedic center, either do the Times. And I just wondered if there's anything, other businesses have sidewalks, why did they not have to put sidewalks in?
Mr. Anderson, you want to answer that?
All right. Those businesses were there prior to many of the people in this room being in our current role. So I don't know why that is the way it is. It has been a priority to install sidewalks in places where aren't any sidewalks. But because you have a legitimate point about how to get from Westlake to Centennial, I would suggest taking the bike path from Forty-Fifth down the back, the west side of the Franciscan, there is a trail there. There is a sidewalk on the north side of Superior, so you can be off the street. It isn't along Forty-Fifth, but it will get you to Centennial about, as the crow flies, the same number of steps. Now, it's not exactly what you want, and we are going to work on sidewalks on Forty-Fifth, so that is the truth. But in the interim, there is a way to get to Centennial without walking in the road. So if you do walk on the road, I would encourage you not to, and instead take the bike path on the west property line of Franciscan and take the sidewalk on the north side of Superior.
I was just, I was just curious though, if there was any kind of ordinance that if you're going to, like, you're going to build a house, we built a house in Wesley, we had to have a sidewalk in front of our house. Did the businesses had anything like that, that they were supposed to? If they did and they didn't do it, can you tell them that you need to do this?
That is something to look into, and those businesses were constructed prior to anybody up there or down here. I don't, I don't know how things got to be the way they are, but it's a good question, we'll.
I think it's best for us to review.
Very good, other comments?
I guess we could just note that any new businesses that are developing property are required to put sidewalks in under current codes.
Hello, yes?
My name is Sandra Lopez, I live at seventeen thirty-three Timberwood Lane. My house is located on the corner of Timberwood and Wildflower, which happens to be a bus stop for Frank Hammond as well. And on the street, right after my driveway, I get a lot of puddles. They call it Lake Timberwood, my neighbors call it that. And in the wintertime, it freezes, causing a hazard for the kids getting on the bus. I've emailed over and over with Alora, and I talked to, I believe it was a David, it's been over a year now. They've had the water department come out to see if it was a water leak, and it is not. It's a fact that the sidewalk is not sloped to go into the sewer. So I would like to know what next steps I need to do to get this fixed.
I think our Tom Andrew is writing down that address, so he can revert to the proper department and we can review that information.
I would just like to note that that's the answer I got when I've been emailing back and forth with everybody for over a year.
We certainly understand that, but with regards to this, we actually have this documentation now. And I will ask Tom Andrew Henderson to follow up, we cannot answer that question at this time without talking to our proper staff, people and department heads. It is, it sounds like it's a serious, a serious condition, and we want to make sure we address it, just that I can't answer that question right now.
Okay, please note that I've sent pictures over and over, so there is pictures that can be referenced.
Thank you. Very good. Anybody else?
Good evening, Stephen Parkus, eighty-six oh five Garfield. I've heard mentions, somebody else has mentioned about the desire to make the town walkable, as it were. And the one thing that sort of bothered me is that as I hear about, read the paper, everything about what they wanted, what you guys, developers want to do for Ridge Road, it's, I think it's ill-conceived. The area is walkable, there are sidewalks on both sides of the road. You can walk all the way, basically, from the Lansing line past, you know, past Columbia. It's, it is very walkable. The, the road backs up, narrowing Ridge to one lane each way. Already with it being two lanes and if there's anything going on on Thirty or the Borman, it becomes a disaster. The other day, there was something both on Thirty and the Borman, it backed up heading east on Ridge from Torrance to the Boulevard and on Forty-Fifth from Burnham to Calumet. Narrowing it down and taking one-third of the traffic away. I just think it feels a very ill-conceived idea. I understand the idea to make things nicer with parking and whatnot and parkways, but I think this is a poor use of our, of both governmental funds and of the design of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I just want to add, my name is Jackie Piper, I live on Carnaby and Westlake. Instead of you guys making the decision about Ridge Road, since there's elections in May, can't you just put it on a ballot and let the people in town decide? We're the ones that live here, and he's right, the traffic is going to be so backed up. And it won't be kid-friendly, don't cross forty-five feet. It's going to be so congested, it's more at risk to cross the street. It's a bad decision, and there's just, what's places are going to benefit from it? I mean, there's already restaurants that have outside, what do you call, patios to eat. You don't need that anymore, you know, you're not going to have a bank put something out there and Rob's Meat Market and, you know, Jules not going to put their deli on the sidewalk to sell to people, I mean, let's be realistic. You know, it's not a good idea. Let the people of the town decide, put it on the ballot in May when we decide, when we vote.
Thank you. Other comments, please?
Kelly Parkus, eighty-six oh five Garfield, same thing. I'm home during the day. Most of time, Garfield, for those of you that don't know, Harrison and Garfield is the next street west of Harrison, by St. Paul, it's a two-block long street. It's extremely hard to get out of, especially when Fisher's is being, having construction. And every other street, it seems like, in Munster having construction. And people go down Harrison like it's the Indy five hundred. And we thank the police officers that sit on Harrison, because we truly appreciate them, because the children are going to get hit. That's the same thing with Harrison and Ridge Road over by the Speedway, and, and my husband's right. It backs all the way. We don't even, I don't know how he knows Torrance, he probably came home that way, but I can't see the end of it either way during the day. And I'm, you know, maybe some of y'all need to drive on there during the day, during the week, and sometimes the weekend, to see how hard it is. Just drive around by our neighborhood and try and get out when there's traffic. We sit there for lights sometimes. You know, it's already very, very congested right there. I agree with this lady to put it on the ballot and let us decide what we want to do with this, with Ridge Road. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Other comments?
Debbie Straka, eighteen forty-five Azelia Drive, Munster. I had one comment, but I do now have two short comments since the last couple people spoke. My first comment is, I would like someone to look into what the problem is on our corner of Azelia and Crestwood. They, we had two water lines break last week on Tuesday, and they've been by several times with the street sweeper and have not been able to clean the debris off our street. So that's, that is my first comment. My second comment, and I will give my address, two-two-seven and one-half Ridge Road, as a business owner. I just want to make the comment that I am there every day, every night, except for tonight. I see the traffic going by. It, it moves, it continuously moves. But I also see the problem with the four lanes. The four lanes, there are constantly accidents, I have witnessed over a dozen accidents this year. And other things going on, it needs to be slowed down. There was, just for people who may not know, there was a planning meeting that lasted months, different phases that people went through to, to give their opinions. And on the streetscape, I wasn't involved in it, but I do know for a fact that there was a lot of consideration put into this. Ridge Road needs to be slowed down and Ridge Road needs to be narrowed, because it's not doing anybody any good that way. You talk about accidents and near collisions, I see them every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'm George Buzzak, eighty-one forty-four Jefferson. Okay, this Ridge Road thing, I live west of Calumet, and I think anybody that lives west of Calumet suffers from the traffic on Ridge Road now, going through their neighborhoods, ignoring the stop signs, speeding. There's one day I was cutting the grass, I was on the curb, and somebody almost sidespiped me. They came that close to me because there was somebody else coming the other way. A lot of the traffic on Ridge is due to people accessing I ninety-four off of Calumet from Lansing. You've got to go from Calumet all the way to Torrance to get on the highway. So I proposed that the town and Hammond get together and talk to the Illinois Department of Transportation, Indiana Department of Transportation, and suggest they put ramps on either Burnham or Wentworth. They'll decrease fifty percent of that traffic on Ridge Road. And there's no reason to take it down to two lanes, because that's, that's ridiculous. That's, as it is now, it's going to send more traffic into our neighborhoods. There's a lot of kids, if you look on the internet, Facebook called What's Up Munster and query, just put traffic in the search, you're going to see over two hundred people complaining about all the neighborhoods, north and south of Ridge Road. And on that side of Calumet, about the traffic and the horrible experiences they've had. I've seen accidents, I live on our corner, a block from me, every summer there's one or two accidents where people are at stop signs. So you ain't going to stop that. The other thing I suggest is save your money. Why put up no left-hand turns by the Fortune House and the Gear Up Place if people are still ignoring that and make those left-hand turns? And I'm on Ridge at Calumet two, three times a day, going to my kid's house, my grandkids, going to Star. I'm getting tired of those people, those left-hand turns. You know, if I had an older vehicle, I'd be pulling out into the middle lane, so if they wouldn't be able to complete that lane, they'd have to wait until Vera will go around me or something. Okay, I was a little perturbed back in July, I got the news you can use, it says Munster's implementing a water restriction. Increased demand has a detrimental effect on a town's water infrastructure and ability to fight fires. Well, infrastructure's one thing, fighting fires is something else. If you query, again, on the internet, which I've learned to use a lot since I retired, Lake Michigan water level is good in July, so there's no problem about getting water. But if we got a problem distributing it, and with water main breaks and stuff like that, we'll have to moratorium on new building in Munster until the infrastructure's updated. You know, you need more water tanks, bigger water mains, whatever. It's time to look at that and stop building until the rest of us feel safe that we will have water to fight fires.
Very good, thank you, sir. Other comments?
I didn't use the five minutes before, so I'll give you another.
I think Mr. Piper's really two minutes.
Okay, yeah. Just a quick question about this fighting fire thing. I don't see the fire chief here tonight, I don't know if you're aware or if the fire chief is aware, because there've been several of the administration changes. There is a connection between Lansing and Munster on the main on Ridge Road, and it's right there at State Line by the Key Market parking lot. That connection was there only in case there was ever a major fire and we needed to have water, it pressure increased, and we could open that valve. I was on Lansing Fire Department for quite a few years, that's how I know this. That has only been used three times that I know of. Once was the Fire Edgewood Departments, Edgewood Departments in Lansing. Once was Terry's Aquarium in Lansing, they opened it up. And once for Munster at the Handy Andy Fire, remember that, that fire there? That valve is open in the streets by Public Works, and it allows water to go one way or the other way, whichever town boosts their pressure. I don't know if to do it, and this is, this is not as slammed as the fire chief, but I don't know if the administrations passed that on from town to town. There are firefighters on the department, I know right now, that are not, not aware of that, so just so you know.
Thank you, thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is James Caspar, A A S P A R, my address is eight zero two one Coy, A O O Y Drive. I live just north of Broadmore on Coy, south of the river. And there is a continuous flow of traffic in the evening, in the morning. I'm guessing it's off of Ridge Road, because that's also been very busy, the current Ridge Road configuration. I've already spoken to my opposition of narrowing this Ridge Road, so I'm not going to waste time repeating that. I do not agree with making it a separate referendum issue. We have two referendums next year, one's called the spring election, one's called the fall election. We can incorporate that, I believe, into our votes for who's going to take a stance on the council. I mean, this is a small R Republican count government, we elect people to do things and get work done. And I can see where, if I hit a point where I'm going to say, if I'm going to have to decide these things, why do I have a five-minute council? So just, just my thoughts on that. Secondly, I read, looking at the memo from tonight on the solid waste fees, reference the ordinance eighteen twenty-four under the proposed rates, there's also a comment making the administration possible future review of how the town recovers its weed collection. Commercial institution, nonprofit and multifamily properties that are not currently charged. When I first looked at that, I said, okay, I'm going to draw an inference from that and say they're not paying for their own weed. Maybe they're paying for their own weed collection separately, maybe not paying at all, I don't know which it is. But the way they read it, sort of read like the residential homeowners are picking up the cost of the four groups I just mentioned. And it'd be interesting to know what facts are alive, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very good, public comment is still open, is there anybody else here that's from the public that would like to comment, the council? One more person coming up?
Yes, sir, hi, my name's Dave Montgomery, I live in two twenty Harrison Avenue. Just want to speak about the situation we're discussing during Ridge Road. The town has already determined that the road between Calumet and State Line is dangerous for drivers and almost even more so for cyclists and pedestrians. Would have liked to bring my bicycle here this evening, but to ride your bike on Ridge Road at any time of day, especially if I is to lead your life in the hands of motorists. Cyclists require orders of magnitude, less space, we inflict less wear and tear on infrastructure. And cyclists and pedestrians are not threatening to person or property like motor vehicles are. And so for that reason, I'm very much in the favor of marrying Ridge Road. I understand and empathize with the concerns regarding traffic congestion, but I'm less interested in the roads in my neighborhood. Being accessible is a tier-two highway option when the Borman's backed up. And more interested in Ridge Road being accessible to my neighborhood and safely accessible for bikers and pedestrians, thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? See, no one's standing up, is there any comments online, Mr. Anderson?
There are none.
Then I think I will close this public hearing, our public comment section, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. There is a motion, accept the consent agenda.
I'll say the motion.
And the second, roll call, please?
Moment, please, thank you. Councillor Mellon?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner?
Yes. Now we move on to old business, ordinance eighteen seventy-nine, this is the second reading on the two thousand twenty-two geo bond issue. I would first like to thank the staff for presenting the capital project list in the board packet. Is there anything else that the staff would like to pass along to the council before we take action?
No, sir.
Okay. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we, is this first reading, sorry?
This is second, second reading.
Yeah.
I move that we accept ordinance eighteen seventy-nine on second reading as presented.
Now second motion.
Very good, that's a motion and a second to approve this two thousand twenty-two general obligation bonds on second read, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Councillor Mellon?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes. We'll move along to ordinance eighteen eighty, the second reading, which is on the two thousand twenty-two general obligation additional appropriation item.
Mr. President, I would move that we accept ordinance eighteen eighty on second reading for two thousand twenty-two general obligation bond additional appropriations.
A second motion.
Very good, there's a motion and a second, any discussion, I'm deciding. Seeing none, roll call, please?
Councillor Mellon?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes. Very good, we'll move on to first, new business, ordinance eighteen eighty-one, this is the first reading on the solid waste fee, refuse collection rate. Mr. Anderson, anything to add to the memo?
No, this is a modest increase year over year. And that cost is going to be variable from year to year, some years it'll be more expensive. I'm thinking back to two thousand eighteen, I believe it was, the leaves would not fall, it got cold, the rain came, it froze. We had to work a lot of overtime to stay in front of the leaves, a lot of equipment challenges, because when you take a big chunk of leaf ice and throw it into the hopper, it wears out the bearings and things like that. So that was a particularly expensive year. Last year, it was pretty smooth, right? So the, the, the cost of providing that service and the year-round branch collection was more modest. So what we would like to get in the habit of doing is reviewing that retroactively, building a baseline so we can project more accurately in the future, so we're not being totally reactive. But what we have here for you is a, if anything, just a topic of discussion, we would recommend that we adjust the fee. As you can see, it's a very modest delta between the cost of providing services and the, and the receipts that we collect from the solid waste fee. So there was a question of how this fee is assessed, it is. It is assessed to single-family residential, curbside, solid waste and recycling. So that is how that service is provided and collected. As a matter of practice, we collect all the leaves in town. So that is a choice that we can change how we collect or how we collect. Though there is, without having a conversation with the department that does the collection, I believe it's done this way because this is the cleanest, most reliable way to make that collection. And I would not like to sit here and write checks for another department to cash without having the benefit of their expertise and how to change that collection methodology. If you were to say, we're going to assess this to X, Y and Z type of entity, right? There are complications that as a person who does not do accounts receivable, I don't know the nuances off the top of my head. So I think that's a broader policy question. And there is not a ton of urgency on this because it's so modest an increase. So if you'd like us to go back and sharpen our pencils, we'd be happy to do that and bring back a solution. If you want to say, we'll pass this on first read, but bring us something with additional language, we could, we could attempt to do that. Really, it's your pleasure. What we're trying to do is provide you with timely and accurate information to make policy decisions.
Very good. Thank you. Here is a recommendation from staff in front of us.
Just had one sort of clarifying question. The re, if I understand, when you say cleanest, it's like most easiest?
The least labor-intensive, the less, the least amount of touchpoints because every touchpoint is a potential source of error, right?
And that's because commercial, institutional, nonprofit and multifamily properties, they pay for their own refuse collection. It does not go through services provided to the town and it does go through, so all residential, we get ours from.
Home with disposal.
From home with disposal now. So that's what makes it the most streamlined approach.
Traditionally, that's the, that's the process that we've been operating under for many, many, many years.
Before council, before council takes recommendation under advisement, Mr. Westland, do you have anything to add?
I'm going to take away one of your options. Because there's only three council people in front of you, you can't pass it on first read tonight.
No, you can hear it. You can hear it.
You can hear it.
For first read and then come back for second read.
Right.
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 I don't think.
Excuse me. Mr. Anderson, use a microphone, please?
Very good.
I misunderstood what that was.
Understand, Dave.
I just want to make sure you.
We can't pass this on first reading because we only have three councils here.
Correct.
Understand. Okay, thank you. But we can pass this.
You can hear it on first reading and set a second reading for November, the first meeting.
Okay. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance 1881 and ordinance amending Schedule A for refuse disposal on first reading and set it for the second reading at the November 7th meeting, which is our regular scheduled meeting, the first one in November.
I believe the next meeting will be in November.
November 7th.
On November 7th. Okay, I will second.
Okay, here's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's first read, so I think that makes sense. If anyone has comments or is there any ideas about how this might need to be handled differently, that can be covered in the interim period.
I do have a comment. Could you ask Mr. Anderson to use a microphone?
That comment's been noted and Mr. Anderson will be using a microphone here, yes. I would, it would be an interesting thing for staff to review. Again, I'm not sure how much leaf collection, it really takes place in front of commercial properties. But, you know, there are multifamily properties and other areas that we might want to look at. So just, this is something to review and see if there is something that's a relatively painless way to administer that cost. Other comments? Very good. That roll call, please?
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Item letter B, Public Works Garage Storm Drain Improvement Project. Is there anything to add to the memo? Is Mr. Gunti online? Usually is, he is, but we're going to leave him out.
Mr. Gunti is available if you have a detailed question.
Very good.
But there is nothing more to add from the memo.
Okay. Very good. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I would move to approve, to approve a word of the contract to Calumet City Plumbing in the amount of $50,690 for the improvement cited in their proposal as outlined in the memo.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
This is the storm, this is the drain in the facility that helps us wash off the salt trucks and keep those valuable assets in good working order, which is kind of critical to our winter operations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. I've seen it. It's impressive facility. We should maybe put a YouTube video of us washing the truck and see what goes into maintaining the streets as well as we do.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Moving on to letter C, the NICD invoice 3851 for the Westlake Corridor project. Anything to add?
Um, no, this is the second invoice that we've received. The packet looks a little different this time. I'm getting more information from them. There's more breakdown of the costs included and we'll be seeing one of these a month probably for, for the near future.
Very good. Yes.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize payment of invoice number 3851 to NICD in the amount of $126,685.38 from the TIP allocation fund.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious if there have been any changes to the design or any snags that they've run into as the, it looks like 66% and 40% complete with the designs of the state train station.
Yeah, and this is, we're, you know, this is through July. So this is all work that we had been working on up to the point where they put the slide deck together for us of the new vision for the stations. So nothing that I've heard.
Okay, so this is paying for work that we've previously seen, more or less?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. There's a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
And concludes the new business. Are there any reports? No, portfolio reports? Announcements, our next town council meeting will be November 7th. And then we'll also have another council meeting on November 21st. Any other comments? Very good. Make, entertain a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll move into our Munster Redevelopment Commission meeting?
I need a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, ten seconds.
All right, I'm ready.
Okay. Now I need a minute. I call the Munster Redevelopment Commission meet, regular meeting on October 17th to order. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Schoen, Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis and Commissioner Gardner?
Present. We're in the public comment section for the Redevelopment Commission. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the Redevelopment Commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the roll call.
Roll call.
I guess roll call.
Counselor, Commissioner Tulowitzki is the one that first, that.
I did the second.
You were the second. Thank you. I was on a different page. Let me, L.A.M. And Tulow. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
All right, three, zero. Thank you.
There is no old business, nor is there any new business, nor reports, any announcements, council or Development Commission members. Then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here we go.
For adjournment, we can do a voice now.